This is the Thursday, August 14, 2014, meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Vig.
Here.
Mr. Cars.
Here.
Mr. Ron.
Ms. Iker.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Ms. McKay.
Here.
Thank you.
We have no minutes before us for approval. Moving on to our Item C of the agenda, Special Order of Business, Executive Sessions, Disclosure. Do we have any disclosures this evening? I'd like to disclose that with respect to the resolution that's before us for approval, Item D1A, I will be abstaining from approval of that resolution. I was not, or I recused myself from that case. I would have recused myself from that case if I was here at that meeting. I was not here at that meeting, however. Are there any other disclosures? Ms. Iker.
Similarly, I will be recusing myself from voting as I was not here and did not participate in this matter.
Thank you. Are there any other disclosures? Seeing none, that moves us, actually, before we get to Item D, I would entertain a motion to change the order of the day and move the consent agenda to after Item H, public hearings. Mr. Vig, would you make that?
I move that we move the consent agenda to follow Item H.
H, public hearings, yes. Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Hart, you've indicated you'd second that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Seeing none, that motion carries and the consent agenda will now be heard after Item H, public hearings. Moving on our agenda, we have no appearance requests or unfinished business and actions of public hearings. There are no regular agenda items. That moves us to H, public hearings. We have two cases before us tonight. Before we get to our first case, I would like to read the Order of Business for variance hearings for those in attendance. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his/her presentation not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. Representatives of groups have five minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from the board. Our first case this evening is Case 2014-0124. The applicant, petitioner, is Sarah Gar. She is indicated, she's present, and staff is here this evening, who will be presenting the sufficiency of notice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On July 24, there were 64 public hearing notices mailed. No responses were received from the public. The Spinard Community Council did not provide comments.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Would you proceed with your presentation, please?
Thank you. The petitioner is requesting variances from minimum yard requirements to allow an existing fourplex to encroach five feet into the side yard setback on the east side and 10.1 feet into the rear setback. The encroachments into the front setback have non-conforming rights and an approved administrative variance. In regards to standard number one, the standard is not met. There are no exceptional physical circumstances of the land that warrant the granting the variance. The lot is not affected by slope streams or wetlands. The lot is served by public water and sewer. Also, the lot exceeds the minimum lot area in the R3 district by 3,300 square feet. Standard number two is also not met. There are no physical circumstances of the land contributing to the need for the variances. The original single-family house was converted into a triplex under an approved building permit, which was issued by the Building Safety Division in error. The neighborhood has a mix of single-family duplex and multifamily buildings. Multifamily housing is common in the neighborhood and may be considered a common ride of enjoyment when the zoning requirements can be met. However, there are no physical circumstances of the land which prevent the owner from having a fourplex that meets the required setbacks. Standard number three is not met. There is no peculiarity of the lot. The lot is essentially the same as others in the same district. The need for the variances is a result of the petitioner's desire to keep an existing fourplex in its current form. The structure meets the required five-foot side setback on the east side and 10-foot rear setback as a single-family house, but not as a fourplex. Standards four, five, and six are met for the reasons stated on Page 5 of the packet, five and six. Standard number seven is not met. The variances requested for the side and rear yard setbacks are 50%, respectively. No variances are necessary for the property to be used as a single-family house or a duplex. The variance is a result of the owner's desire to maintain a fourplex in its current form. The department finds that standards one, two, three, and seven are not substantially met for either variance and therefore must recommend denial of both variances. If after a public hearing, the public hearing, the board finds all seven standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions one through three on Page 6 of the packet. Condition one is just the as-built survey prepared and provided with the application. Condition two is to record a notice of zoning action with the updated as-built. And condition three is to obtain an after-the-fact building permit for the conversion to a fourplex. I'd be happy to answer questions. Also, the petitioner is here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Are there any questions of staff by any of the board members this evening? Yes, Ms. Dole.
Yes, can you speak to the effect of the comments in the process if we were to grant the variance of the, on Page 41 of the packet, the comments from the right-of-way supervisor for the municipality of Anchorage? It says, "Based on the most recent as-built in the review package," and I wasn't sure if that's the same one that we're looking at. It appears there is no defined point of entry or exit from the parcel, and the driveway surfacing extends for the whole lot coverage. This arrangement is not the MOA traffic section driveway standards and is unsafe, resolved with traffic section allowable width, location, and number of driveways to the parcel from the street, and basically to the MOA right-of-way permit would be required. Can you elaborate or speak to that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. On Page 41, the right-of-way division is essentially saying the entire front of the lot facing the street is paved, and there's a requirement that no driveway be wider than, I think it's 25 feet, and a commercial driveway is allowed to be 30. But, so, so the condition of approval, the requirement to obtain an after-the-fact building permit will cover this because everybody under the building permit and after-the-fact building permit, all the agencies will review the site plan, and the right-of-way division will be one of those agencies reviewing, and the petitioner will have to go through the driveway permit process and clear up any issue about the width of the driveway. The tricky thing here is, is property owners are allowed to pave on their property without the need for a building permit. You're allowed to pave on your property without obtaining a building permit. You don't need one. There's no zoning requirement that says you can't, you know, pave 90% of your lot. In some communities, they limit the amount of impermeable space on the lot, but that's not the case here. However, if you widen a driveway or do any paving to the curb, to the city street, then that requires a driveway permit. They didn't go and obtain one, and so there's an issue with the width of the driveway, and that'll have to be resolved with the right-of-way division with this after-the-fact building permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? I do have a few questions, Mr. McLaughlin. You addressed the, or you, I guess briefly in my mind, addressed the statement on Page 3 of the staff packet regarding the citation from 2125-020 regarding the entitlements section again. Could you go over that again, because I think that that will be a point of discussion with this case this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Building Safety Division granted a certificate of occupancy for this building to be converted from a single-family house to a triplex. The building permit was issued in error. The single-family The single-family houses and duplexes only have five-foot side setbacks and 10-foot rear setbacks. But triplexes and fourplexes are required to have 10-foot and 20-foot setbacks, 10-foot side and 20-foot rear. The original single-family house met those setbacks, but the triplex, the conversion, the building permit in error, the triplex didn't meet the setbacks because they increased, right? The property owner is unfortunately responsible for a building permit that is issued by the Building Safety Division in error. The regulation is called invalid land use entitlements, and it says, "An entitlement issued in violation of the zoning regulations is void." So that makes the property owner responsible for a mistake made by the Building Safety Division.
Thank you. The, a couple other questions I have. This is a, an approved triplex. I mean, besides the fact that we have the issue with the building permit. What is the process to, one of the conditions for approval, I think, was to, the after-the-fact building permit? Is that, if it wasn't for this situation, would that be a formality? Or what is the process to go from a triplex to a fourplex?
Through the Chair. So a building permit is required to add another unit onto a building. So when they converted it from a triplex to a fourplex, so it was a legal triplex. They'd have gotten a certificate of occupancy for that. But they converted, they created another unit within the same building footprint without a proper building permit. An anonymous complaint came in from the neighborhood about the creation of this fourth unit. And a code enforcement officer, I believe, went and discovered that an additional unit was there. And so the code enforcement officer, I think, engaged the property owner, and they applied for an after-the-fact building permit. So they've already begun the after-the-fact building permit to right this situation. However, the encroachments were discovered with that permit. And in order to complete the permit and get a final certificate of occupancy as a fourplex, they need to obtain variances for these encroachments.
And I have one last question, and then see if any of the other Board members have any other questions. On Page 46 of the staff packet, there's, it's an email from Ms. Inglis, and it indicates that the case is being processed free of charge due to an error by the Building Department. Is that the normal policy? Or what is the policy for processing variances in situations like this?
Well, applicants are required to, applicants for entitlements are required to pay the fees. The fees are adopted, they're in the zoning code. They're towards the back of the book. So it's not an administrative thing. They're in the code. It's a regulation, the fees. But the Community Development Department waived the fee for the applicant.
And because this was, I'm sorry, can you finish my thought or my question maybe?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Waive the fee because, recognizing the error?
That's correct. I'm sorry. Yes.
Are there any other questions by the Board members of the staff? Any at all? If not, then we will hear from the applicant. Could the applicant come forward, please? Could you please state and spell your name for the record?
Your bet. My name is Sarah Gahr. S-A-R-A. Last name is G-A-A-R.
Thank you, Ms. Gahr. You have 10 minutes for your presentation. And again, we must find that all seven standards are met in order to grant a variance. So will you make sure, part of your presentation, you address the standards?
Sure. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sarah Gahr, and this is my husband, Bruce Enns. We're longtime Alaskans and are proud of that. Bruce came to Alaska in his teens nearly 50 years ago to fight forest fires up in the interior. And I arrived in Anchorage about 20 years ago to provide special education services out in the villages. Before continuing, I'd like to request two minutes for rebuttal. I'd also like to take a moment to thank you, the zoning board, for taking time out from your busy schedules, particularly during the Silver Run, to serve our community. Thank you, too, to Frances McLaughlin and to the many other members, many others at the muni for helping us navigate this rather complex municipal system. Let me provide you with a brief history about our situation. We purchased 2307 McCray Road in 2006 from the owner-builder, Mark Thayman. We own the six-plex across the street and got to know Mark and his family because we're active owners, managers, and spend time at our buildings. I'd like to refer you to Page 22 of your packet and also to Page 27. If you look at that, there are photographs of both of our buildings, 22 being 2307 McCray Road and Page 27 being 2304 McCray. When Mark told us that he and his family were moving to Colorado and offered us the building, we jumped on the opportunity. It's a gorgeous building. We reviewed all the plans and signed the inspection, and the signed inspection paperwork from the muni and saw everything was done above board and to spec according to the muni's standards. After we purchased the building, we decided to divide the larger unit, which was Mark's family home unit, into two units. There was a separate children's wing above the garage that had two bedrooms, a full bath, its own separate entrance. My talented husband put in a kitchen, which cost us under $5,000 for that unit, and we converted the triplex into a fourplex. And if you turn to Page 26, you'll see the work that we did. That's all we did. We didn't change any of the footprint. Nothing was changed except adding the kitchen. Our mistake, though, is that we never got a permit for the simple conversion, which we are in the process of doing now. And it was during this process that we learned about the encroachments. I'd like to add that during our ownership of both McCray's, we've added a lot of value to that part of Spinnard. Our properties are very well-maintained with excellent curb appeal. Both our buildings were freshly painted this summer. All of our units are updated and modern. As a result, we stay fully rented with high-quality professional tenants who stay with us for many years. This is not a drug house. There are a lot of drug houses in the neighborhood. The police have never been called to our properties for any disturbances. We are active owners and managers and take a lot of pride in what we do. Currently living at 2307 McCray is a contractor and his family, a mobility instructor for the blind, a regional manager for one of the major health clubs, and a meteorologist. In regard to the seven standards, we believe we met them as they applied to our unique situation. Please understand, we're not asking for a variance for something that we did, nor are we asking for a variance for something that was not approved by the muni, and we're now asking for forgiveness. We're asking for a variance for additions that were built following all the appropriate muni procedures when application was made and approved in 2003. The builder adhered to his approved building plans and did not go rogue in his building. These additions went through numerous inspections and were issued a certificate of occupancy in 2005. The muni erred in missing these encroachments. Now, we're standing here tonight seeking a variance for these encroachments, which were never recognized 11 years ago. We've tried to address the variance standards as best we can, but given this unique situation, the standards do not seamlessly apply when human error was the underlying cause as to why we are here tonight. Standard one, there are exceptional and extraordinary circumstances regarding this property. The exceptional and extraordinary circumstances are that an error was made when the muni approved the initial building plans and the encroachments were clearly marked. I ask that you refer to Page 32 of your packet. And in that, what you'll see is the original as-built plan that Mark turned into the muni. In it, you'll also see that the sidewall and the rear walls are marked, and the encroachments are clearly spelled out there. But they were missed, and they were signed off and approved, as you can see. If you turn to Page 35, you'll see the commercial permit record. And that started in '03 all the way through '05. Everything was approved by zoning. If you turn to Page 33, you'll see the as-built after the structure was built according to plan. And again, that was approved. If you turn to Page 34, you'll see the certificate of occupancy, again approved by the muni. There was no indication that anything was wrong.
And Ms. Gahr, just so you know, you have two more minutes left of your eight minutes.
Oh, okay. All right. According to the areas that we reportedly do not meet, if you look at standard two now, it's because of these circumstances, the strict code of application would result in undue financial and emotional hardship for us. If you refer to Page 23, you can see where the addition, the rear addition was made. And it's nearly a 1,500-square-foot garage with 1,500 square-foot of living apartment space above that garage. In order to remediate, that would require tearing down that whole structure. If you turn to Page 25, you'll see the five-foot sidewall encroachment into a 10-foot setback. And this is a bedroom addition in a different unit. The loss of the five foot from the bedroom would be significant and impact the quality of the unit and overall the value of the building. The cost of demoing and rebuilding these structures to accommodate for the five-foot setback would be cost prohibitive for us and would greatly diminish the value of the building. If you turn to Pages 28, 29, and 30, you'll see what the other properties look like on McCray Road. Many of them are out of code, don't comply with standards. It's a hodgepodge of single-family, trailer parks, multi-units, and businesses of questionable character. Many, if not all, have severe and obvious code and safety encroachment issues. Thus not granting us a variance for our property would indeed deprive us of rights commonly enjoyed by this area. For standard three, no, this hardship would not result, was not self-imposed and not merely an inconvenience. In good faith, we trusted the muni when we saw everything had been signed and approved by them. The muni made an error by approving these plans.
And you're working into your rebuttal time now.
Okay. Can I have two more minutes to finish up?
No. If you want to take your two minutes of rebuttal time.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay.
Standard, standard seven, yes, the variance request is minimum variance. It is clear now that an error was made, and these side and rear encroachments were missed when the muni approved the building plans. If these encroachments had constituted a major deviation from code, we believe they would have been recognized sooner than 11 years ago. And it's only drawing attention now because of the conversion. In conclusion, we trust and hope the zoning board will approve this variance request and recognize that we are only seeking a variance due to muni error when the approved plans for a structure clearly had these encroachments. The muni has already agreed to pay for all of our costs related to applying for this variance, as they recognize they made an error. As citizens, we purchased this building in good faith that there were no zoning or other code issues because the muni had approved all aspects of this building's renovations and additions. We trusted the muni's seal of approval and never questioned it. Now, we are appealing to you, the zoning board, to grant us variances on the encroachments that were missed prior to our ownership. We need to have these variances granted so we can have clear title. 2307 McCray is a Geminan neighborhood that is still very much in transition. The renovations, in addition to this old rundown 1950s Spinnard home, changed the character of the street. We've worked hard and will continue to work hard to advance the rental quality found in the Spinnard area. What we ask for you now, the Board, is to approve something that was already approved by the muni 11 years ago. Thank you for your consideration.
And I'd just like to thank my wife, who has put probably 100 or more hours into this and used a big portion of our summer to address this issue. And she has not spent any time enjoying this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gahr, maybe just for a second, are there any questions of the applicant by any of I do have a couple of questions. This was a triplex when you purchased it? Is that correct?
Yes, it was.
And you understand, I had Mr. McLaughlin read the citation from code as far as an application issued in error and what we've got before us this evening. You understand that as well, right?
Yeah, we are. But we're appealing to the Board.
Could you speak to your, I mean, could you provide your name?
Oh, my name is Bruce Enns. I'm Sarah's husband.
Could you spell that for the record, please?
It's spelled E-H-R-E-N-S.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sorry, but I just wanted to say that, yeah, it was a triplex. We, it moved absolutely no walls. We essentially put in a sink and a stove.
And would you just speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. We, this was a triplex. There was absolutely nothing done to the building to change the configuration of the building. There were no walls put up. There was nothing. It was a sink and a stove and some cabinets added, and that constituted the conversion to a fourplex. This was done in a matter of three or four days. If you look at the photographs, it was all done quality work with quality materials. And we're through the process to convert it to a fourplex, and that is going well as far as getting.
No, the only stumbling block is this.
This is the stumbling block right now.
Thank you. And Ms. Gahr, you had said something. Could you speak into the microphone again? Yeah, we're recording this, so we need to.
Sure. This is the stumbling block now. We've already been working with parking and have found a viable way to get parking all taken care of.
The parking issues that you brought up previously, they've been addressed. They're all on a, pardon me, from a, a plan that's, a pre-plan that's been submitted to the muni. And, you know, the permit should go smoothly as far as getting the additional permits. I mean, we have a stack of permits.
Okay. Are there any other questions of the applicant by any of the Board members? Does staff have any questions of the applicant?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we will open the hearing up for public testimony.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
By the way, I just found out that you guys don't get paid for this, and you guys should be.
We used to get pizza. Sorry, Tim, we don't. We don't even get pizza anymore. With that, the hearing is open for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chair.
There's no public testimony, but I will ask, is there any rebuttal from the applicant? Okay. They've indicated no. With that, the matter rests with the Board. Could I have a positive motion from a Board member, please? Mr. Vig?
Mr. Cars, I realize this may be out of order, but may I ask a question of staff prior to moving ahead?
I believe so, since we haven't begun our deliberations on the case. Yes?
Mr. McLaughlin, on that section on entitlements that Mr. Cars asked about earlier... earlier, the underlined final sentence that reads, "An entitlement issued in violation of this section is void." Are we talking about the entitlement being the granting of the permit that allows it to go from a duplex to a triplex? Is that the entitlement that, in this case, would be void? And not the encroachments?
Through, through the chair, Mr. Vig, I think that this section, I, you know, I'm not sure. It says at the beginning, "No entitlement may be issued under this title unless all structures and uses of land and structures permitted under the entitlement conform to this title." I think that means that you can't issue a building permit, let's see, no entitlement may be issued, no building permit may be issued unless all the structures and land uses permitted under the zoning code conform to the zoning code. So the, the building permit becomes null and void, the two thousand and five certificate of occupancy becomes null and void because there are encroachments and there was an error made in issuing the building permit. I hope that I've answered your question.
You did, and I'm, I'm not, I think you did, and I, I'm not really sure what, I'm mulling in my mind the distinction between the two, but that helps, helps me understand. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Dole, are you making a motion or asking a question? Are we?
I, I would like to ask a follow-up question through the chair of the staff on that.
Okay. Ms. Dole.
Through the chair. If the applicant was not requesting a fourplex and this had been discovered, is the position or the, is it your understanding that they could request a variance to allow the triplex, the certificate, the, yeah, the triplex, triplex to remain? Or, put another way, I guess, if, if at the time these additions were proposed, the encroachments had been, it had been realized that they were encroachments, they, could they have come to the zoning board to request a variance to obtain the certificate of occupancy for the, for, and the building approvals for a triplex? Maybe I'm not very clear. The, going back to the language about the entitlements, if they had, if, if at the time the zoning board had issued a variance, then would the, then would the entitlement have been issued in violation of that section or not?
Well, I mean, it's, things fall into three categories. I, I don't know if I can answer your, your question, your finely worded question. I think that either someone without a building permit adds an addition to their house and it encroaches into a setback, and it's discovered and they have to come and apply for a variance after the fact, after, you know, they've created this encroachment. That's one possibility. Another is that somebody applies for a building permit, the architect submits it with the encroachment, and it's approved that way in error because the building safety division approves thousands of building permits over the course of the summer. And, and that's the case with the applicant, right? And so they're, they're responsible for the error that was made, even though it was a previous owner, and they're trying to right the ship here. And then what's the, the third option? Or somebody just builds without a building permit and they're in violation and it hasn't been caught yet? I think those are the three options. I, you know, I, thank you for the question. I don't know if I'll be able to answer it properly.
I, I think, I think that helps. That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I wasn't clear.
Ms. McKay.
I have a question also of staff through the chair. Does it make any difference if this is a triplex or a fourplex?
I thank you for the question, a question through the chair, Ms. McKay. No, it does not. They have the same setbacks. It, it's irrelevant.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious if there have been other cases where this regulation has come up and what the action of this board was for those.
Through the, through the chair, Mr. Hart, I've been working for the planning division for approximately seven years, and I have been assigned to process two other instances similar to this case, and both were approved, approved. However, each situation is unique and no decision of the board can be precedent-setting.
Are there any other questions? Since we, we deviated a bit from process, I would like to offer the applicant, if there's any rebuttal, to any questions that, that were heard this evening. I think appropriate to allow for any rebuttal.
Thank you. I appreciate that because I kind of rambled through when I got the time limit. You know, basically, the encroachments are, are a separate issue than our conversion into a fourplex. We're going through that, and there haven't been any stumbling blocks for it. And I see us proceeding through, except when we found out about this encroachment, which really pretty much laid us flat on our faces because this is a major issue. And if it isn't approved by you all, then we're forced to go into something much more significant, as you all know. And these encroachments were missed. It was a human error, and we recognize human errors are, do occur. And whoever reviewed it, reviewed it for a single family. They didn't review it when it became a triplex. So they were recognizing what the setbacks were for a single family and just missed it throughout the entire process.
And, and one other factor is, it's been, the building has been.
And again, Mr. Enns, could you speak into the microphone, please?
The, the building has been in the existing configuration for eleven years. There's been no complaints. There's been nothing but an improvement of the quality of life, an improvement of the values of all the properties surrounding it. Everything we've done in that community, we, we take personal pride in our buildings and in our home, just as you folks would. We've done nothing to degrade the area. We've done nothing but improve the area. There has been no public testimony. There's been no public comments saying that, that this is going to hurt anybody. I mean, the, the back of the building above the Boys and Girls Club, there's, there's thirty acres of open ground back there. There's no chance that's ever going to be converted. I see that nothing that we've done has hurt the community or the, or the muni and.
If, you know, if there was a simple solution to it, we would look at that, but we're not willing to tear down the building. And this is our livelihood. This is our retirement. This is what we've invested our money in. And it's nothing that we did. We just found it in this process. So we appreciate your consideration. We know it's, we know it's a tough one.
Yeah, and this'll, this'll just, we'll continue to, we will continue to improve the community and, and I think you guys, if you drove by that area, you'll see that our buildings fit in with the new fire station rather nicely. And, and like I say, we're, we're proud of what we do, and this really slammed us. I mean, this is, this has been a, a major undertaking and not the way we planned to use our summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that a question for the applicant? Now that you've seated, we're giving you your exercise today. There, there was one question from staff. Ms. Dole.
You bet. Sorry. I, it, you just said that, you know, if, that, yeah, basically you'd be required to remove this thing. And I guess I'm wondering, because there's a factor seven that wants, that asks if there's...
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you speak up? I'm having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry. You just basically said that, you know, the encroachment would have to be removed, which would be a substantial undertaking. And I'm wondering if there was some sort of other alternative that would allow maybe a lesser, allow the encroachment to remain in some way, shape, or form with a lesser encroachment into the setback. So for example, it, it's look, it says that you are asking for a ten point, or there's a ten-point-one feet into the rear setback, and I'm just wondering if there's any kind of alternative that would require less than a ten-point-one feet into the rear setback that would not require you to tear everything down.
Ms. Dole, there, that's major supporting structure. There's, there, there's no way that whole building would not, you're talking about hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. There's virtually no way.
It's, it's a two-story structure, and that's the supporting wall that would have to be cut.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions for me.
Thank you. Mr. McGlaughlin?
The structure has standard eaves. The eaves are not especially long or overhanging.
There's no eaves on that building.
Yeah, so there's, there does not, I just confirm what they said.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I believe that, that's all now. Thank you. Again, with, with that, the, the matter does rest with the board, and I would like Yes, Mr. Vig.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant in case number twenty-fourteen dash zero one two four, variances from AMC twenty-one forty zero five zero G to allow an existing fourplex to encroach five feet into the side setback and ten-point-one feet into the rear setback, subject to the three conditions noted on page six of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Could I have a second from a board member, please? Yes, Mr. Hart, you've indicated you'd second that motion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Vig, would you speak to your motion, please?
Thank you. Yeah, this is, this is a challenging case, and I, I struggle with, with standard, standard number one about the physical circumstances that being, being exceptional or extraordinary. And because of this, of the situation of the, of the structure on the lot and the fact that the prior action did not, well, it received what everyone believed at the time was a valid permit, is a bit of an extraordinary circumstance. I, I would point out that perhaps another extraordinary physical circumstance is the, the Boys and Girls Club, large tract of land immediately to the north of this property, which, in my opinion, tends to mitigate somewhat the encroachment in the rear yard setback. So I would like to hear other board members' thoughts on that, but I, I believe that that could be partially met for those reasons. Standard number two, that these physical circumstances would create, applying a strict application of the code would create an undue or exceptional hardship on the property owner. As we've heard the applicant state, modification of the structure to comply with the code that's in the strict application would, would be an exceptional undue hardship. I believe that one could possibly be met. Again, we'd like further discussion on that. Standard number three, the hardship is not self-imposed and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. I believe that that standard is met, and I know that in other situations where new owners come into properties and, and inherit things that they weren't aware of, in this case, I, I believe that the applicant performed a high degree of due diligence in examining all the available information in the, in the property records, certificates of occupancy, building permits and the like, and, and should be entitled to rely on, on those documents that, that are approved by the municipal building department. So I believe that standard is met. Standard number four, I agree with staff that the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property, similar with regard to standard number five, that the variance, if granted, would not change the character of the zoning district. I agree with staff on that finding. Standard number six, I believe that the variance, if granted, would not adversely affect health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage. Agree with staff's finding on that, that it is met. Standard number seven, the variance is the minimum that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. You know, a reasonable use of the land in this case is a triplex, I believe, and, and the fact that it meets, meets the standard for a single-family home in its, only because of the use and the number of units changing, and not the footprint itself, but I believe that is a reason to believe that that standard could be met. And so before I state whether I will support the motion or not, I would, I would like to hear some other thoughts from fellow board members.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I'm somewhat struggling with finding number one as well. I mean, I guess the way I, this may be a stretch, but the way I somewhat see this is that the, the exceptional physical circumstance of the property is that there was an entire portion built on, in connection with the municipality's approval. And I mean, that may be a stretch, but, but I mean, I guess I see that as an exceptional physical circumstance, not applicable to other land in the area. So I, I'd be interested in hearing other people's, other board members' thoughts on finding number one as well. But otherwise, I think I'm in agreement with the previous board member that spoke.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are you, are you holding out whether you support the motion until, as Mr. Vig had stated, until there's other testimony as well?
I would, I would like to hear other individuals' comments on, on finding number one as well.
Thank you. Could I hear from any other board members, please? Yes, Ms. Iker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I...
I too struggle with meeting standard number one, but am leaning slightly towards thoughts similar to what Mr. Vig expressed in that I think that because of the way Alaska Administrative Code 2125020 is written, the permit that was issued is, for our purposes, deemed void. So I don't think that we can grant a variance based on a permit that was inappropriate, unappropriately issued due to human error. I do want to note that I am appreciative of the petitioner's presentation and understand the substantial amount of work that went into this and commend the commitment to the neighborhood and providing multifamily housing, especially in the quality and such that you have provided in the pictures. And I am sympathetic to the position you find yourselves in now through no fault of your own. I, in reviewing the standards and seeking to want to find some exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstance, think that the location of the lot and the fact that there are only four lots, or four residential lots on that small street in the abuts a rather large vacant, empty parcel makes the structures on that lot situated, or makes that lot itself somewhat extraordinary. And I, I plan to vote in the affirmative to grant the variance.
Thank you, Ms. Iker. Ms. Dole?
I also struggle with the same issue raised by my fellow board members and agree with Ms. Iker, but I also, it also has occurred to me that the, even though the encroachments were an addition, the fact was that the single-family house was already built and that limited the, the places where the renovations and the remodeling could be done when it was done at the time. And the fact that, and because of that, because of the, the location of the existing, of the house that existed before then, that single-family house so close to the setback, combined with the, the physical location of that rear setback with, not bounded by other residents, but by that large field area, is what makes, I guess, what convinces me on that issue.
Ms. Dole, do you intend to support the motion, then, just for the record?
I do. I note that I asked, and both the applicant and staff concurred, that it would not be possible to, to have a lesser variance in, and that removing the entire structural support walls would be requirement, would be required. And so I believe that factor seven is met based upon that. And I agree with my colleagues as to the other factors.
Thank you. Are there any other comments by any of the board members? Yes, Ms. McKay?
I'm going to support this, this request for a variance. In previous cases that we've heard, I've found that having a vacant parcel next to the lot is, is a reason to find that there is an exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstance of, of the property. I live in the area, and I went by this morning, and the petitioners are correct. It's, it's a very nice piece. It doesn't seem out of place. It doesn't seem large or encroaching in any way, and I'm going to, I agree with the findings of my, of my fellow board members on the, on the standards, and I will support.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Mr. Vig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Board Member Dole's logic and, and her analysis of standard number one, and I, that provided some additional clarity to me, and I, with that, I will support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Given the discussion, I also plan to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. I, I too intend to support the motion, and I appreciate all the comments of the board members. I gleaned different tidbits of, of information from each, each board member with respect to finding that the standards are met. And I would just, for the record, like to state, I do believe standard one is, is met, concurring with, I believe, Mr. Vig's comment regarding the Boys and Girls Club being a vacant, a relatively vacant piece of property that provides setback to the back. With regard to standard number two, and as Ms. Dole had indicated, there was a substantial amount of a lot that was built, built on previously with the original building. And as I believe Ms. Iker said, that the, I think if you look at page seven of the packet, this is a very oddly shaped lot. So that, I, I think that that weighs in on the original location, or the location of the original house, which also limited the, the opportunities for, for the remodel. That is the same discussion I'd like to make with respect to standard three. The odd, odd shape of the lot is a peculiarity of the lot, and that that shape did have some bearing, and that the five-foot, the, the house that encroaches, or the building that now encroaches five foot into the side yard setback was in existence at the time the original house, or that the structure was expanded upon, so there's really no new residential area in the, the five-foot setback area. I concur with the finding of staff and the, the other board members with respect to findings of standards four through seven, and again, intend to support the motion. Are there any other comments from any of the board members? If not, please vote. That motion passes by a vote of six to zero. I did not indicate at the start, start of the meeting, in order for a motion to pass, it's required to, that a majority of the fully constituted board, the vote in favor of the variance. Fully constituted board is made up of nine members, so a vote of five, five members is necessary to grant the variance. That motion does pass by a vote of six to zero. I do need to read something. There it is. "That every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court." Before we hear our, our next case, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We, we are back in session. For the record, Mr. Ron has, has come in and is in attendance for this second case. Do you want to say here?
Present.
Present. That brings us to our next case this evening, case 2014-0125. The petitioners, Mr. Vig?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I wonder, at point of order, should we clarify if Mr. Ron has any disclosures to make?
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Before we hear this case, Mr. Ron, we are, we, we have actually changed the order of business and moved the consent agenda item to the end of the, end of the meeting this evening, and we'll be hearing that after our public hearings. We have just heard case 2014-0124, and now the, the second case is 2014-0125. So with those two items remaining this evening, do you have any disclosures?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and the board. No, I do not have any disclosures this evening.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Mr. Vig. Thank you, Mr. Ron. The 2014-0125 case, the petitioners are Patrick and Kendra Goforth. They're here this evening. They've indicated they're present. Ms. O'Brien, could you provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sixty public hearing notices were mailed on July 23rd, and including notification to the Taku Community Council. There were no returned comments, either in support of or opposition to the variance request up until today. Two letters in, in support of the variance request were received today, and they were placed on the table for the board's review tonight. This is a variance request from AMC 2140045G1 to allow a remodeled exterior stairway entry to encroach six feet into the required 20-foot front yard setback in the R2M district. This case is being reviewed under the old code that expires at the end of this year. The property is developed with a one-and-a-half-story two-family dwelling that was built in 1980 according to property appraisal records. The foundation of the structure is located five feet behind the 20-foot front yard setback. A four-foot-wide exterior wooden stairway provided access to the second-floor dwelling unit. An eight-foot-by-20-foot wooden deck was located at the top of the stairs and extended across the west face of the structure. Both the stairs and the deck were uncovered. The wood deck extended three feet into the front yard setback, and the stairway and deck have since been removed. The original stairway became hazardous during inclement weather, with accidents involving injury having occurred on icy steps. So for safety reasons, the owners want to construct an enclosed stairway to the second level. The remodeled stairway addition measures 13 feet wide by 11 feet deep, resulting in a six-foot encroachment into the 20-foot front yard setback. The need for variance came to light when a stop-work order was posted for construction without a building permit. In reviewing the seven standards that are applicable to granting zoning variance, based on court decisions that special conditions must arise from the physical characteristics of the lot, it does not appear that standards one, two, and three are met. The lot is rectangular in shape, measuring 70 feet by 110 feet. The 7,700-square-foot lot size exceeds the minimum 6,000-square-foot lot size required for a two-family dwelling in the R2M multiple-family residential district. The lot is level at 62 feet, means sea level. The lot is not impacted by wetlands, streams, or major drainage ways. Based on previous court decisions, interpretation of the standards for granting a variance, it does not appear that these standards one, two, and three have been met, that there do not appear to be any physical characteristics of the lot that would limit development of the property in comparison to other land in the same zoning district. However, it should be noted that the petitioners are not the original developers or owners of the property. They did not create the three-foot encroachment by the deck into the front yard setback, which existed for over 30 years before it was removed by the current owners. The difficulty in constructing a safer entry to the upper-level dwelling unit arises from the fact that the foundation is, in fact, only five feet setback from the front yard. In terms of standards four, five, and six, they appear to be met. If granted, the variance will not adversely affect use of the adjacent property. It will not allow a use that is not otherwise permitted in the district. A stairway is an integral feature of the structure to gain access to the second level. It will not affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. It will enhance the safety of the people living in the upper-story dwelling. Having two means of egress in the event of an emergency is an essential life safety feature. Standard seven does not appear to be met. The variance request may not be the minimum necessary to provide an enclosed stairway. This is an architectural feature. The new addition does extend perpendicular from the west face of the building, rather than running parallel as the previous staircase and deck did run. An alternate design to construct the enclosed stairway parallel to the west face of the structure might result in an enclosed stairway that could reduce the amount of variance request, and it is unknown whether it could possibly eliminate the need for a variance. However, the proposed, the proposed design of the stairway does have a side benefit in that it will, does not span the entire west face of the, this structure, and it will allow sun to reach the lower dwelling unit, which it has not happened since the structure was originally built, because there will not be the overhang that obscured the windows of the lower level by the previous exterior stairway and deck. Basically, as, not all standards were met for recommending approval of the variance, the department must recommend denial of the variance request. However, if at the conclusion of the public hearing, if the board finds that all standards are met and approves the variance request, the department does provide the following conditions on page eight of the packet for the board's consideration. Number one is just identifying, stating the, the variance that is approved, and that it is shown on the new stair addition that is drawn by Charles E. Hawkes. A building permit shall be obtained from Building Safety Division, proof of which shall be submitted to the current planning section, and this variance shall become effective upon recording a notice of zoning action and the approved resolution with the State of Alaska Recorder's Office, proof of which shall be submitted to the current planning. Recorder's Office, proof of which shall be submitted to the current planning section. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Yes, Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. O'Brien, did that existing deck and stairway that had been removed have any nonconforming rights of any sort before they were removed?
Through the chair, Mr. Vig, no, they did not.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Ms. O'Brien, I do have a question. Is this construction complete for this covered entry and stairs?
The applicant's representative or the applicant themselves, they did present pictures, additional pictures tonight in the packet, as well as there was a picture of the construction, as I'm assuming as far as it has been completed to date, and that was also placed on the table tonight. I would have to defer to the petitioner as to how far the construction has been accomplished, if any more construction has been done beyond what is shown in the photograph.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff by the board? Yes, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious if there's a little more information on what exactly the safety issues were. Was water dripping on the original steps from the roof because there's not a gutter? Or were there some other issues with that?
It appeared that in the wintertime, snow accumulation or rain or freezing rain, the steps would become icy, and that the steps would become a little bit treacherous to go up and down. I'm sure that the actual owners could provide more information on how accidents occurred. I was going by what was included in the application, and icy steps can be treacherous.
If I could follow up?
Yes, Mr. Hart.
So just from your perspective, there's nothing outside of the normal for Alaska?
Through the chair, Mr. Hart, certainly a covered stairway is preferable to an uncovered stairway. Many homes are constructed with arctic entryways so that there's a safe way to enter the dwelling unit, and because this is an exterior stairway and not an enclosed stairway, I imagine, I go up and down on an exterior stairway, and it does get really icy in the winter. That's all I can say. And there's 20 steps in my stairway.
Are there any other questions of staff? Yes, Mr. Ron.
Thank you, through the chair, Ms. O'Brien. Would there be any difference in the application of the code in terms of an encroachment in the front yard setback based on the design of the new structure? If the structure were not fully enclosed, let's say it were just covered, would that necessitate a different application of the code, or would there still be a similar dimensional encroachment into the setback?
Mr. Chair, I believe, Mr. Ron, I believe that the owner's architect is here and probably could more completely answer that question, whether there's a bend in the stairway or not, if it's not enclosed. From the photograph, it seems like the extent of the stairway would encroach just as far. The only difference is that there's that exterior wall, the westernmost wall that would extend into the front yard setback. It seems like if there was a lesser encroachment, it would probably be rather minor in nature, maybe just the thickness of the wall that is going to enclose on the western side of
Thank you. I'll follow up with the petitioner or their representative.
Ms. Dole. Are there any other questions of staff? Yes, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there a regulation that stipulates how wide a set of stairs must be to go up to the second floor? And if so, how wide must that be?
Through the chair, Mr. Hart, from the Building Safety Handout on Page 7, the last paragraph, "The width of a residential stairway shall not be less than 36 inches. Handrails shall not project more than four-and-a-half inches on either side of the stairway." And that was from the Anchorage Building Safety Handout, R.07, Residential Stairway Construction. I spoke with someone in Building Safety, and that standard applied to, there was no difference between an interior or an exterior stairway, that the standard was the same.
Yes, Ms. Dole. Could you turn on your microphone, please?
Sorry, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. The previously existing deck was encroaching, but that's been removed, correct? And then I guess the other part of my question is, the previously existing stairway, which was four feet in width, was not encroaching? Is that correct?
Through the chair, Ms. Dole. I know that the dimension of the deck was 20 feet, so it's known that that was encroaching. There was five feet for the stairway to be located outside of the required yard setback. I'm not sure if any portion of any handrail would have extended into the required front yard setback. There is, there was an ASBIL survey that was rather old and hard to read that was included in the packet. On Page 20 of the packet, the dimension from the deck to the front yard was 17 feet rather than 20 feet. There is not a dimension provided between the stairway and for the front yard setback to the stairway. It does appear that the stairway may not have been encroaching into the front yard setback.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, could the petitioner come forward?
Good evening, through the chair. I'm Ryan Stencel with the Anchorage Soil and Water Conservation District, spelled R-Y-A-N, S-T-E-N-C-E-L.
I'm sorry, are you the petitioners?
You're going to have a collection of people representing and helping the petitioners in this.
Okay.
And so we're going to all?
Just one minute, Ms... We have a letter saying that, they're with me, we got a lot of information that we received towards the end, or towards the beginning. We have a letter stating that the law officer, Brent Cole, can represent.
Yes, he's with, I'm going to take about two minutes, and then he'll come up right behind me, and everything will fit within...
Well, before we hear from you then, I want to hear from the petitioner that you have authorization to represent them. Could you please, could the petitioner please come forward? And could you state and spell your name for the record?
Patrick Goforth, P-A-T-R-I-C-K-G-O-F-O-R-T-H.
Thank you. And, go ahead.
Kendra Goforth, K-E-N-D-R-A-G-O-F-O-R-T-H.
Okay, thank you. And just so you know, if you have one, if you were going to represent yourself, you have two people, you have 10 people, you have 10 minutes between all of you. So Ms. Stencel's indicated she's going to be speaking on your behalf?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else besides Ms. Stencel and Mr. Cole that will be representing you this evening?
The architect, Mr. Hawks, is also here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, again, you have, thank you, you have 10 minutes. Could you state and spell your name for the record, please, Ms. Stencel?
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, my name is Ryan Stencel with the Anchorage Soil and Water Conservation District, spelled R-Y-A-N-S-T-E-N-C-E-L. Real briefly, this home was built in 1980, and since then, building code has significantly changed, but I will speak on just the seven points. There were four points that the planning department called into question. On the first one, the physical characteristics, the structure was built in 1980. With the changes of building code as designed, this is the minimum that's needed to reconstruct the entrance to the structure. If this variance is not approved, it would impose an extreme hardship, because it would require a complete remodel or reconstruction of the entire structure to accommodate an entrance in another location. The 1980s construction already encroached three feet into the setback. This application approves only an additional three feet, so that the construction can be up to current building code. Regarding Standard 3, this hardship is not self-imposed. The 1980-constructed entry was unsafe and not to current building code. The planning department admits this on Page 5, when it acknowledges the petitioners inherited an existing hardship that does not result from any action of the petitioners. In the discussion of Standard 4, the planning department further supports this, when it states the variance will not adversely affect the adjacent properties, and that the stairway is an integral feature to the structure to gain access to the second level. This construction, once done, is in complete character within the neighborhood, and there are several other properties that also encroach. You'll also notice by the support of the neighbors, this is perfectly within the character of the neighborhood and will not stand out in any way. Regarding Number 7, this is the minimum variance possible. The architect is present tonight to testify to this fact and to answer any questions you may have. In the planning department's review of this standard, it merely states that the planning department feels that there may be another design that could work. However, the idea has not gone onto paper, and the architect is the best to speak to that. Other than that, I would just say that in approval of this variance, there will actually be a net loss in encroachment. The original construction that was there took up something like 190 square feet. This will cut 30 square feet off of that footprint, and so it will actually decrease the amount of encroachment into that front setback. And with that, I will turn over to the petitioner's representative, Brent Cole.
Through the chair, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate your willingness to listen. I know it's late at night, and you've already been through one of these.
And just briefly, could you state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Brent Cole, C-O-L-E-B-R-E-N-T. We're here tonight on a variance request from AMC 2140-05G1. I would like to at first address some of the questions that have been asked here before. The completion of the building is where it is, in the pictures, they stopped. The permitting matter has been taken care of. This was a mistake by the petitioners. They understand that now. There was some confusion about that. That has been taken care of. With regard to the safety issue from Mr. Hart, yes, the petitioner herself was injured on the steps. It has been a cause of, as you have obviously lived in Alaska, there are issues related to snow and water, but in this particular case, the overhang from the roof is very short, and so the stairways themselves and the deck became slippery, and several people were injured. In addition, my client has young children that she's had to carry up, and she's been concerned about that, plus they have elderly folks, and that's why with the liability issues, they decided they needed to do something different on the outside. We'll address your question about whether or not you can have stairs going up. You are correct that there is a minimum of approximately 40 inches, but that will interfere with the integrity and the type and nature of the structure. It's a two-story duplex with three bedrooms on each top and bottom, and by putting the stairs in horizontally, you run into problems with ingress and egress. And so this was specifically designed to not only provide a covered entryway, but also to maintain the three-bedroom structure on top and bottom, which is the way it was originally designed. And finally, Ms. Dole, I believe that your question was, is correct. It was the deck that mainly encroached. It was not the steps. I am really here to talk about the number one, number two, and number three, and I almost wanted to raise my hand at the last time, because I saw the board struggling with number one, and I would just say this, the staff, and with all due respect to the staff, I'm not absolutely as experienced as staff is in these matters, but I will tell you that I looked up the case cited by staff for making a determination of what the board can do in these circumstances. And City and Borough of Juneau versus Thibodeau, which is cited as the basis that you cannot go outside to simply the property, has been overruled by the Alaska Supreme Court. The logic and the legal analysis applied in that case does not apply, in our opinion, for two separate and distinct reasons. First, the Juneau statute, language or the ordinance that was at issue is different. The ordinance is cited as, is not, is different than what is, let's see, the ordinance is, the peculiarities of the specific property render it difficult to carry out the provisions of this chapter, and that is different than variance number one finding, which is exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, such as, but not limited to, streams, wetlands, slope, and such physical characteristics are not applicable to other land. We believe that the new ordinance requires, and the Supreme Court's decision, as subsequent and legal analysis, is not a strict construction, but it says that you, as a board, need to not only take into consideration the actual language of the statute, but also the purposes of the land ordinances. And in this particular case, as we know, Title 21 says that the purpose of it is to encourage the most appropriate use of the land throughout the municipality, enhance safety from fire and other dangers, preserve property values, and promote public's health, safety, and welfare. And we feel that in each of these circumstances... And we feel that in each of these circumstances, that has been met. This, we believe, is an exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstance. Because of the way it was designed, it has five feet from the front of the facing of the building to the setback, the twenty-foot setback.
And Mr. Cole, you have two minutes for you and your architect.
Tried to explain, uh, show that by putting in the last picture of your package. That is a picture showing, actually done yesterday, what a five-foot, um, stairway would be for both of those stairs. If you get past the strict construction rule in number one of that case and you find that this is an extraordinary circumstance, we believe that the factors of number two and number three can easily be met. Number three is that it's not caused by the, um, um, uh, petitioner. I have the architect here. He's available to answer any questions that you have about what alternatives exist. It's our position that the staff, with all due respect, was just wrong in determining that there were other reasonable alternatives for an enclosed one. Thank you. I would be happy to take any questions from anybody if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. And just one question for clarification. We had some color photos that were, you'd referred to the last page of our packet.
I'm sorry.
I believe it's the last page.
This is the one I was trying to refer your attention to because it shows a two-by-four extended. It's a five-foot two-by-four that's extended from the front, which would be the, the length of anything that we could construct, um, to get to the front entryway, both top and bottom.
And, and that's the two-by-four that's being held in the gentleman's hand in the picture?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Cole. Uh, are there, um, any other questions of the board members? Of the applicant? Yes, Ms. Aiker.
Thank you. Through the chair, um, I am just hoping that you can walk me through some of these pictures that we're looking at. How do you access the bottom level? Is that?
Okay.
If I'm holding your-
Photograph number one, first page. You access the bottom through, I wanna make sure. It's on the far left, left-hand side.
So that's a separate driveway over here?
Yeah, it's right in that area.
So the door, the front door is for the bottom unit is not visible from the front of the street?
The front door of the bottom unit is on the side. Yes.
I'm just situating myself, um, in, on page twenty, the old Asbott I'm looking at. It appears that there is a deck and stairway on the back of the house. Is that correct?
Is it?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know if the petitioner has thought about relocating the front entrance to utilize that backspace and enclosing that back deck?
I, I don't. I'd, I'd have to defer to the petitioner or the architect on that. I think that the issue is that, that the front door would then open up into your kitchen, which is not the way the house was designed, so they didn't look at that.
Okay. That's all I have for right now.
Yes, Mr. Ron.
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Cole, during your presentation, you made a comment about, um, safety in terms of egress for a three-bedroom unit. Can you provide some foundation for, for that statement?
Uh, well, the design, as I understand it in speaking with the architect, is that it preserves the ingress and egress of all the bedrooms, um, and, uh, and, and allows this to be maintained as a three-bedroom on the top and three-bedroom on the bottom. The way it is proposed to be constructed, um, and I'll defer to the architect on that.
Yeah, you can't. Could you come and, uh, state your, state and spell your name and-
I'm Charles Hawks, architect, and, uh, H.A.W.K.E.S.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk.
It would be impossible to do the stair down in front of the windows and enclose it because you've prevented code-required egress from bedrooms and, uh, it, it wouldn't work.
If I may follow up, Mr. Chair, um, that, that, Mr. Hawks, thank you. That just adds a few more questions than, maybe I'm not understanding the location of the enclosed structure. You mentioned that, uh, a vertical stairway, as I think I understand it, going directly out to the street from the existing door would block off egress from first-story windows. Does that then mean that the structure as currently designed enables, um, that egress from those windows?
Yes, uh, we've got that little notch, if you look on sheet A three, uh, it's confi- that window has proper clearances for egress.
And, and Mr. Hawk, we're, we're, we go by staff packet sheet number, so just allow us to catch up to you. I think your A three is our packet, page twenty-three. Okay. Could, could you, I, I have a hard time doing two things at once, so could you? I found the page. Could you state your, your response again on that?
Well, I have to say, I'm not sure he answered the question that was asked. So would it be possible for Mr. Ron to ask the question again? I apologize for that. I wanna make sure that-
That's okay.
He answered your question.
Yeah.
My, my question, Mr. Hawks, is with respect to the argument that, um, an alternative design for a staircase going directly out to the street would block egress from a first-story window. That presumes that the structure as designed allows egress. So my specific question is, does the structure as designed allow egress? I see a notch that discusses access door to crawl space below.
You're right. You, you were addressing it. I, I think the answer is yes. The structure as designed and as-
Could you speak into the-
It does allow proper egress.
This notch, yeah, there's the window.
And that is-
The configuration, it's, it's kind of a-
Page twenty-three.
An L shape, right. Oh, I see it's, uh, twenty-three in the pack.
Page twenty-three in your pack.
All right.
And for clarification on that, page twenty-three, and I believe, Mr. Ron. Um, Mr. Ron, I, I'm gonna ask maybe the same question you were asking, just differently. Um, Mr. Hawks, on that page, on the right-hand side entry, there's a structure behind what's called the access to the crawl space. I'm assuming that's the window. You've got a dimension, three foot, six inches on the upper right. And portion of the drawing, right below that, is that the existing window that's, that's right there? On the, off the, the front of the existing building?
Well, I need that.
Oh, can I get turned on?
Should we turn this on?
Mr. Chair, that's how I'm interpreting it now, so I would appreciate confirmation.
Sure, yeah, we're gonna get this, uh, our overhead turned on here and, um, yeah, it's on, it's, there we go. I think if you spin that, uh, hundred and eighty degrees.
In this space here, there's, this is a bedroom.
Just one sec. I think there's a light on the base, and if he'll spin that- Where his left hand is. There we go. And if you'll spin that, your drawings, a hundred and eighty degrees, that'll be looking. Yeah, keep going. Yeah. Right. Yep.
It's, it's right over here.
Yep.
That, there's space here for the egress.
If you'll turn that microphone to him just a bit. So that, that, uh, Mr. Hawks, that area that you were just pointing out, that's the, uh, existing window?
Why, that's a bedroom window.
Okay, and then that allows for ingress and egress out of that existing second-story window. Is that correct?
If you, yeah, if you look, uh, through the chair at the second to the last color page here, there's two pictures on it. And the picture on the left shows the foundation before the structure was built. And I think that will explain the ingress and egress out of that window, the maintaining it.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Did that answer your question?
One final question on the egress with respect to that window. Uh, Mr. Cole, Mr. Hawks, um, the previously, um, existing deck and stair structure, uh, did that inhibit ingress or egress from that window?
I'll give you this back.
I, I think the answer to that is from looking at the first picture, and the answer is no.
Thank you.
Ms. Aiker.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have one follow-up question regarding, um, the design. I understand that, that the design, the preferred design is obviously what you're requesting the variance for. I'm wondering if you've had time to consider alternative designs that would give the applicants an enclosed stairway and not cause ingress, egress issues. I mean, such as, you were stating that you can access the bottom floor from the side of the unit on the left. And I'm noticing on page two, the side of the unit on the right has no windows. Or it, have you considered relocating that stairway on that side and perhaps wrapping around to access the front door so that it's not fully enclosed, but maybe it's covered? I guess that's my question, is, is there alternative designs that have been considered or discussed?
Did you hear what she said?
I can't.
She, uh, she asked whether you considered alternative designs on this side of the building to put it in, or?
No, uh, because of the house, the floor plan, the existing floor plan dictates that that entry would be in the center there.
Right, I'm not talking about relocating the front door. I'm asking about relocating the entrance to the front door. And, and maybe the answer is no, there's no alternative designs that have been, I'm just trying to get to.
We'd have to redesign the house.
It's, it's frustrating a little bit because you've got a house that was built thirty years ago-
Right.
-with a split level. And having that door in the middle is kind of the focus, so when you walk in-
Yeah, you'd have to redesign.
You know, you've got bedrooms on the sides of you. So really, the only place you can go is, you've mentioned, in the back, but then you wouldn't have a front entryway. Um, and, uh, otherwise, if you're on the sides of the house, you're running into bedrooms. And the, the, the logical layout is to have an entry on the front door. In the front of the house, excuse me.
If you'll indulge me, indulge me, I'm gonna try one more time to ask my question. Not asking if you wanna relocate the door.
Right.
I'm just wondering, can you build this enclosed staircase on the side where there's no windows and then just simply turn the corner and walk on the deck on the top and go through your normal front door? Have you considered alternative, um, accesses that encroach less? It would require us to grant less of a variance?
I don't know what that, what that would.
There's parking spaces on both ends. See, one, one unit, the lower unit parks on, let's say, the left side and the right unit. So the center section, uh, center entry serves both units more equally. It, it's a more logical solution, I think.
Thanks.
Ms. Dole.
Um, thank you. Uh, through the chair first, and follow up to Ms. Aiker's question. Um, I, I guess I wonder if, uh-
Could you speak up and into the microphone, please?
Certainly. Um, I, if there would be, and for a, a couple of questions. First, would there be any encroachment issues with regard to the side setbacks if you were to try and do anything on additional to either side of the house, outside of the house? That's my first question.
What, what, I don't, what's the setback next to the side of the house? On the side? I, I can't confirm this, but I'm informed that the setbacks are five feet from the house. So we're gonna run into the same problem on the-
You could do it, but it, you'd have to redesign.
The interior.
Interior of the house.
What they're saying. I don't, I don't know. Just wait a minute.
Okay, my-
I need to deal with falls outside of the-
Could you speak into, into the microphone, please, Mr. Hawks?
Sorry.
Through the chair, maybe I can, um, help a little clarity here. Um, from talking with Mr. Hawks, um, he has gone through and, and looked at any alternative design that would possibly work without needing a variance. And there were issues with each and, and every one of them. They wouldn't be able to be permitted. We'd find ourselves back here for a variance on, on the entrance from the side or, um, causing the property owners to completely remodel their home to be able to access from another direction.
Um, thank, thank you. My, my next question is just, um, if I understood correctly, you said that the first-floor apartment currently accesses from the side, the ground-floor level on the left side, if we're looking at the, the picture from the front, you know, from the drive, from the mailbox. Um, and my question is, when you walk through that door, are you walking into a bedroom then? Because you seem, I, I was a little confused because you were saying that the bedrooms were on each side of the center door, but yet the ground-floor apartment, oh, front door is on the side of the house. So maybe you can clarify that for me. What, what do you, um, see when you go through that front door to the ground-floor apartment?
Do you have a floor plan of the first floor?
No.
Basically, from my understanding, the floor plan from the first to the second floor are differing. The first floor was designed with the entrance on the side rather than the second floor where the entrance is at the, the front of the home.
But we're providing a new one at Central.
It goes into the living room.
Okay, thank you. And if you were to put an interior stair there to go upstairs, is the concern that you would have to remove one of the bedrooms? And instead of having a three-bedroom apartment, you might have a two-bedroom apartment or something like that?
Well, the setbacks on the sides of the building are at five feet, and so we'd be back with a variance if they-
Yeah, I'm asking a slightly different question. Um, before I was asking about an, I think the idea was an exterior door on the right side of the house. But I'm asking about an interior stair, so using the existing door to the ground-floor apartment, but, um, adding a stair going up inside the house.
Oh, remodeling the home to, to, um, provide an interior access to the second story from inside the home.
Yeah, I guess I was asking about that, what that would.
It would just be the financial hardship imposed on the property owners.
Okay.
Outside of our school.
Yeah, Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as the petitioners, petitioners can tell, I think there's a lot of interest by the board in alternative solutions. My question isn't with respect to those alternative solutions, it's to how we got to where we are today. are today. Question to the team, at what point did Mr. Hawks, the architect, come on board? Was that foundation in place already? I believe I had read or heard that.
He was there from the beginning.
Sorry, could you, whoever, sorry.
He was there, he was there from the beginning.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Vig.
Thank you. Just a clarification, Ms. Stensel, when you introduced yourself, you identified yourself as a, as with the Soil and Water Conservation Service. You're not speaking on behalf of that organization or anything like that, you're, as a private citizen?
No, I actually am the operations manager for the district, and we help property owners in similar situations who, who need some assistance through the process.
So your agency gets involved in cases like this from time to time? Okay, I did not know that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I need to ask a question that you may have think has been asked and answered about four times this evening, I apologize, but if you go to page 20 of the staff packet, the existing as-built prior to any construction... Could, could you describe to me where the access to the lower living unit is on this picture?
On the left-hand side of the picture, there's a little square off the side of the building, that is the access to the downstairs unit.
So where, I believe, right off that, the northerly paved drive, there's a square three-foot by four-foot dimension?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And then a, a follow-up to that question, so we're now putting, what you're proposing to do is move that door from that location to, more towards the center of the building as it faces the street, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions by the board members? Seeing none, does, does staff have any questions of the applicant?
That's it.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. With that, we will open the case up for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Thank you. If you could, again, state and spell your name for the record.
Chris Manculich, M-A-N-C-U-L-I-C-H.
Let you have three minutes.
Okay. The house in question, I was born 1976, I came home to that house. My parents raised it, and it was just an empty basement downstairs. They sold it, well, previous to them selling it, the stairway actually came off the deck out to the front of the house where the sidewalk was supposed to go through there. There's a 20-foot setback, so there could be a sidewalk through the neighborhood. 1968, house was built, there's never been a sidewalk. There's never been any improvement, they don't do any street maintenance. We've got some people that moved into the neighborhood. Now, I live two houses up, and another house that my parents bought was, as a kid, that I grew up in. We've got some people moving into the neighborhood, doing some things to fix things up, and as you can see, nothing's been done to this house for 30 years. Yeah, a couple of good old boys from Minnesota came in and made it a duplex after we moved out of it, and they've got a side entrance that's just, it's ghetto. I mean, it, it really is, you look at it, and it brings down the value of the neighborhood. You know, these people, I'm not in any relation to them, only spoken to them a couple of times, but they're moving in, trying to make things better. You know, you guys are talking about the different points that they have to meet, you know, those points should come down to common sense. There's a 20-foot setback to the front of the house, for what? I mean, what, what do you need 20 feet from the road for? There was a deck that was out there, there was a stairway that went all, all the way out to where the sidewalk was supposed to be. I'm assuming at some point, somebody told that owner, hey, you got to move your stairs to the other side. They moved them under the eaves of the house where rain is pouring down on them, water frozen, you know, just, just a mess. You know, there's all sorts of ordinances and anchorages that you guys could enforce. I mean, you drive through that neighborhood, there, there's 20 different houses that you should be doing something about. You shouldn't be harassing a guy who's trying to make things better. I, for one, as, as one of the oldest residents in the neighborhood, appreciate the fact that he's coming in, trying to make the place better, re-siding, doing the things that he's supposed to do as a homeowner, and just, just making everything better. And I can tell you that I've talked to most of the people on Angie Street, and everybody's excited about, you know, things getting better. The house directly across the street, they added the exact same front entrance on their house. They didn't put a foundation, they drove piling down, so they didn't have to have a permit. Nobody bothered them about it, you know? Is it because this house, when it was originally built, was two or three feet farther forward than the house across the street? Cut them a break, let them make the neighborhood better. You know, common sense. The, the ordinances and the setbacks that you're using, they, they don't make sense. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Manculich, a board member? Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Again, you can state and spell your name, please.
Tom Embly, T-O-M-E-M-B-L-E-Y. And I'm here basically to testify in the fact that I, Kendra's my daughter, okay? I visit the home a lot, I take my grandkid to the hockey game, and Patrick can keep the, the deck and the, and the stairwell clean when he goes to bed, and by the time I get there, it's, there's buildup and ice and slick and all that. I, myself, personally, have fell twice on the stairwell. I've caught Gregory twice on it. It's not like Patrick doesn't maintain his stairwell, he tries to, but he goes to work a lot earlier than Kendra does. By the time Kendra gets her kids and goes to school, it's, it's later, it ices up again. The whole issue of the stairwell being enclosed is strictly life safety. The house doesn't increase one inch in size, it's just making, where my wife can come see her grandkids at her daughter's house because she has rheumatoid arthritis, she can't go there from like about September till April because of the stairs that go up to this joint. It's just dangerous. I mean, that's the only thing to look at here. I mean, it's, you keep peeking about 20 feet setback, okay, there's another nine foot in front of that 20 feet that's, that's right-of-way, that they're doing nothing with. I mean, I just don't understand it, because the yard would be nicer, the appearance, he could have tried to cheapen it and do a real, you know, cheap way of doing it, but aesthetics was a real issue with him, so he went the extra mile and got roof lines that, that looked good, and hired the architect to do it, and so I just think that this should be approved because of stuff like that, and it's a betterment to the community, and it makes it where people can go to their home without worried about hurting themselves, and that's the issue right there. Have any questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone, any board member, any questions? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Vig, there is one question.
Mr. Embly, you, you brought up an interesting point, I wanted, I wonder if I could ask you about the, the distance between the property line and the edge of the street? It sounds like there's some additional buffer there that...
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Serves as...
Right-of-way, it's, it's, it is road right-of-way, but it's nine feet before you get to the curb, the, the gutter curb of the road, which Patrick has with grass, but it's, you know, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chair.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
Well, I just want to summarize a couple of things here, and, and then I'll get out of here, I know everybody's been here a long time. We've had an encroachment for 30 years. This is not going to increase the encroachment that's been in place for 30 years, in fact, it's going to decrease it. We've made the place safer, and while the, the board has asked a number of questions about alternatives and possibilities, the fact is that this petitioner hired an architect to come in and to provide a solution that is common in Alaska, an Arctic entryway solution that meets code, and is the only way that he has been able to find to meet code. Certainly, we can all hypothesize, and staff did, that there might be a possibility of that, might be a possibility of that, but we've hired a professional to come in and to provide you with an op, an app, a, a, a proposal. It's the least rec, minimal, and there's been no neighbor complaints, in fact, you've heard positive ones. We thank you for your attention, I, I know these matters are difficult, but we would appreciate that you would vote for an approval of the variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. With that, the, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion, please? Yes, Ms. Dole.
Sorry, I hope to catch you beforehand, I had a question for staff, if it's not too late.
Very well. Go ahead.
Through the chair, I just wanted to ask if, what that, what was said about there being the right-of-way for the road, extending roughly nine feet into what's shown as, as grass in the first picture that was laid on the table today, and then that the 20-foot setback runs from the edge of the right-of-way?
Through the chair, if you look at the, the as-built on page 20, the, east half of the right-of-way is 25 feet, so there is a 17-foot, there's a 20-foot right-of-way, so portion of the area that is grass could be undeveloped right-of-way, and that would be part of the public right-of-way, and so I have no idea what the dimension of the grassed area is right-of-way, because I do not know how wide the improvements to the developed right-of-way are, so I couldn't tell you what the dimension of the undeveloped portion of the right-of-way that appears to be grassed would be.
Okay, thank you. That's, no further questions for me.
Thank you. Could I have a positive motion from a board member, please? Yes, Ms. Dole.
Mr. Chair, I, um, not sure if this would, I guess that the positive motion I would, am thinking of making is somewhat different than the one that was proposed by staff, but Mr. Cole, in his comments, brought up a legal question about the case that is cited in our packet, and my motion would be to perhaps hold off on, or postpone our deliberation until, or making final findings and, and request that we get additional input from, like, the municipal attorney or something like that, as to the, the case that Mr. Cole was saying had been overturned.
I guess I'd request that you make a motion then, and if we have a second, then we can discuss it further. Could I have a, what, what is your motion?
I move to postpone at least the final decision-making on the, this variance request until we have further, and to request input, oh, sorry, for our next regularly scheduled board meeting as to the legal argument that was presented by Mr. Cole here today.
Ms. Dole has made a motion, is there a... Oh, could you push your motion button, please, Ms. Dole, so we've got it recorded? Is there a, a second to Ms. Dole's motion? Doesn't appear we have a second. So with that, I think that goes back to having a motion for the board to consider. So, could I have a motion to consider? Yes, Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case 2014-0125, I move the board grant a variance request from AMC 21.40.05, 45G.1 to allow a remodeled stairway entry to encroach six feet into the required 20-foot front-yard setback, in consideration of department recommendations, or pursuant to department recommendations, 1 through 3 on page 8 of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. And Mr. Hart, you've indicated you would second that motion. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Ron, would you speak to, to your motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's take reverse order and knock off those that I agree with staff on. Starting with standard number 4, 5, and 6, I concur with staff's findings in that those standards are met for the reasons stated. Jumping back to standard number 1, I appreciate some of the discussion brought forward by the petitioner's representative with respect to the case, and I also respect Board Member Dole's interest in clarification there. That said, I am willing to discuss this standard without the additional clarity that was requested by Board Member Dole. Believe that we have seen this for a number of years, and trust that the department's legal counsel has, has worked through those issues thus far. That said, I'm willing to entertain some discussion after the case with respect to, to further information being provided to the board. to, to, to further information being provided to the board. That's a long way of me saying that I'm confident in discussing this standard, um, as put forward. Regarding physical circumstances of land, very clearly it is a flat lot, um, that appears to be consistent with other flat lots in the neighborhood. Uh, so a strict interpretation with respect to physical circumstances leaves me in a quandary. So I, I am open to looking at, um, peculiarities, uh, not directly related to those physical circumstances, or rather, physical circumstances that take into account the structure, um, as it's developed over, over the years. Given that it has been turned into a duplex, which has changed the, the character of the way that the structure is used on the lot, uh, likely including the addition of a second driveway, um, I am willing to intertwine, uh, those thoughts and find that the standard is at least partially met in terms of extraordinary physical circumstances. Carrying that forward into standard two, um, agree that, um, this, excuse me, I find that this standard is at least partially met, that because of the physical circumstances of the duplex on the lot and given its proximity to the street, um, find that the strict application of the code would create an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner, um, given the need for ingress and egress, um, in its most practical location and, and that being where it, where it currently is, on the front of the house. With respect to standard number three, the hardship is not self-imposed. Uh, we have heard the testimony from the petitioner and their representatives, um, that they did not create the duplex. Um, if my logic holds, um, with respect to intertwining the property as a duplex with physical circumstances and hardship, I find that standard three is at least partially met as well. With respect to standard number seven, the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. We heard, uh, a fair amount of testimony regarding the safety or lack thereof of the prior, um, entrance to this property. I think the board has been appropriately sympathetic to Arctic entries in the past, and, uh, I'm surprised that, um, the terminology of Arctic entry didn't come up more in discussion today. As a personal homeowner, um, I have a two-story house, but the advantage of a garage, I, I don't have, uh, covered stairs that go to my second floor, so I, I go in through my garage, which is safer. Uh, this, this property does, does not have that, uh, advantage. So again, taking that in consideration with respect to minimum variances, um, think that standard number seven is, um, is met. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too agree with staff on findings four, five, and six. I am currently struggling with findings number one and, uh, in particular, number three. In particular, to number three, I, I find it hard to convince myself that this isn't self-imposed to at least some point, uh, given the fact that a, a previous stairwell has been taken down and, and entire new structures, um, being put up. As it relates to finding number two, um, I, I, I think I could partially agree with some of the arguments that were made. And then in regards to standard number seven, at this point in time, I, I'm not finding that argument to have been met. Given that, at, at this point in time, unless, uh, discussion leads me to believe otherwise, I, I likely would not support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are, is there any other discussion from any of the other board members, or any board members? Mr. Vig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with, uh, my fellow board members and, and staff's findings on standards four, five, and six as well. And so I'll focus on standard one. I, I think Mr. Ron is, is, uh, correct in viewing the situation that exists today as, as one that is, uh, created by the physical circumstance of the structure being located where it is. And, um, and during the, the time that I've served on the board, I know we've heard a number of cases similar to, to this where, um, outside staircases and, uh, safe egress and, and, uh, safe egress from second stories has been a concern, and, uh, we've viewed that as an important feature that, that needs some accommodation. That aside, I, I think on the face of it that the physical circumstances are, are there, that I could, uh, make, uh, in my mind, uh, make the case that standard number one is met. Standard number two, um, excuse me, uh, because of those physical circumstances, the strict application of that code would create an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. We've found in numerous other cases over the years that, um, living in Anchorage, Alaska in the wintertime, uh, commonly enjoyed rights and sometimes include, um, garages and covered, covered stairways or enclosed stairways, uh, to allow for safe use of the structure. And I think strict application of the code in this case would create a hardship. And I believe that that standard is met. Standard three, the applicant had a structure that had a, a greater degree of encroachment than what is proposed and, um, is seeking to, to make a, a, a bad situation better. And, uh, I think in that light, um, I, I think, I don't see the hardship being self-imposed. I, I view it as an enhancement and, and a reduction in the actual encroachment, encroachment, and, and, and so I'm, I'm viewing that standard as being met. Standard seven, the variance granted would be the minimum, making possible a reasonable use of the land and, and, um, I think we, we heard people, um, or board members, uh, searching for alternatives that didn't require, uh, this variance or the degree of the variance. And I think it became clear as, as I listened to those that I believe the applicant and their architect have found the best, um, possible solution and not only functions well, but it, in my view, it's, it's an attractive addition to the building. So, uh, I, I think that standard is met. I, I don't think there's a reasonable alternative to provide the safe access to the second floor that has a lower or lesser degree of encroachment. So I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. McKay?
Um, I too am going to support the motion, um, and for the reasons stated by Mr. Vig and, and Mr. Ron, um, that often, um, this board has, uh, dueling issues. And for us now, we have, um, the, the set, front setback versus, um, life safety issues. And I think that, um, falling on the side of life safety is, is what this board ought to do. So I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Are there any other comments from any of the board members? Yes, Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To, to be honest, I'm still struggling with, uh, findings number one and, uh, number three. For finding number one, I, I feel like the situation is all, all over the state and all over the city, and, uh, there aren't necessarily extenuating physical circumstances, uh, related to this property. At this point in time, I, I do intend to not support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. I, I, I will weigh in. I intend to support the motion. And again, we, as this board has always done, I think we're finding the most difficult standards that we must find or met or one, two, and three. And, um, I, I do concur, um, while, uh, there, there have been a couple of questions that, that were, uh, asked of the applicant. The Arctic entry was on my notes on things to, to bring up, um, as far as providing the access. This is a winter city and, and I'd, I'd agree with Mr. Ron, the, uh, the lack of a garage and a, a safe, uh, access, um, for either one of these units, um, weighs in my decision that, that I, I do feel that this, uh, this variance should be granted, that, 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 um, that standard should be met. I appreciate a couple of the comments that, uh, Mr. Cole made at the end of the presentation and, um, three things that I agreed with, that this encroachment has been in place for thirty years. Their architect, uh, has looked at and provided what I believe is the best solution and, um, and again, going back to the Arctic entries or a safe, uh, uh, inviable design component, uh, as well as, um, the aesthetics. And we have heard from the, uh, public that have been, um, lived in the area and that, that, um, this is an improvement. That, I, I think weighs more towards, uh, standards four and seven, but I'm, I'm jumping around a bit, I apologize. The, the safety, I do think, is enhanced with this proposal, and I think that weighs in finding that, uh, standard one is met. With regard to standard three, uh, standards two, three, and seven, that this is a, a safe, um, covered entrance that could not be constructed without a variance. Um, and I think that that is what the, uh, architect has conveyed as well. And, uh, I believe that, uh, even if they were to look at replacing their existing deck in its current configuration, we would be in a, a variance situation and that this, providing this, um, covered entrance, granting the variance allows them to provide a covered, um, entrance. And so that makes me believe that standard three is met as well. So for those reasons, as well as for those of, uh, Ms. McKay, Mr. Ron, and Ms., Mr. Vig, I intend to support the motion. Are there any other comments? If not, please vote. That motion passes by a vote of six to one. Again, I do need to read for the record, "Every final decision of the board shall clearly stay on its face. It is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the ca- case, and that the parties have thirty days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court." That moves us to our consent agenda. And we have, um, the one case, uh, the resolution for approval for, uh, resolution two thousand fourteen zero zero eight, the related case is two thousand fourteen zero five eight. Ms. Iker and myself have indicated we would be abstaining from voting on that resolution. Is there any discussion? Oh, Ms. McKay?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Could I have a s- Ms... I don't know who, Ms., Mr. Vig, you've seconded that?
I seconded the motion.
Thank you. And Ms. Dole, you, you have a comment?
I, I do. I'm hoping that you can, um, clarify for me, and my, my colleagues can clarify for me why it's, this can, resolution is written the way it is, because, um...
Mr. Chair, and sorry, Board Member Dole, but, uh, in, in the honor, honor of procedure, um, understanding this is the consent agenda, would it be more appropriate for us to request pulling, uh, this for, for discussion and, and dealing, dealing with the motion on the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Thanks for keeping me clear. I think without pulling the item, we can't discuss it, so I think we could entertain, if you wish to pull that, then we can discuss the, you could ask your question.
So I could make a motion to pull it and give the reason for it?
Yeah.
With that?
Yes.
Okay.
So would you, you made that motion, Ms. Dole?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to pull it because I, um, I have questions about the way it's written.
And I, I think, uh, I, I, you can pull it, and I don't know if we even need a second. I think we could just, there's been a request to pull it from the consent agenda, so, um... Roberts would be very disappointed in me right now. I don't know how well I'm following the rules. Okay. So that, uh, Ms. Dole, we pulled that from the consent agenda, and you wish to discuss that or ask your question now?
Okay. Um, well, if it's not part of the consent agenda, does someone need to make a motion to, um, to discuss it? Okay. Okay, if I, I guess my question was, do I need to make a motion for anything? But if I don't, um, I would like to say that when I read the resolution, it, it refers to in standards that were making fa- findings of facts, um, standard ones, standards one through nine, and I believe those are standard were sections A through, um, something, A through... They were, they were not quite how we discussed them in the, um, meeting, and so I, I wanted clarity. I also was, I guess, a little bit troubled because, um, when the administrator for the Muni made its decision initially, um, they included a lot more detail, and it seemed to me that some of that additional detail might be appropriate. And, um, I guess I was also questioning when there are statements that say a standard is partially met. I mean, I, as opposed to substantially met or, um, met or not met, um, because I was wondering if that could be a little clearer. So those were sort of my, my questions about it, and, um, I would be looking for clarification or enlightenment from, I guess, my colleagues in terms of, um, whether this is, whether it's clear enough that, you know, with the references to standards one through nine versus what I thought we were discussing, which was E, I guess it was E one through... Maybe it was E one through nine. I guess, I guess I, I'm answering my own question, because it does refer in the whereas clause to E one through E nine. So I think when it's talking about standard one, it's talking about the relevant provision of E one of that section of the municipal code. But it's a little, I mean, I think those are maybe not like the standards we have had in the last two cases. It's, uh- Quite, it's. Anyway, I guess I just wanted to have a discussion and hear from my colleagues on that before I voted.
Mr. Ron?
Ms. Dole, thank you for the question, raising the points that you did. This was a case unlike any other that I'd heard in my time on the Board. And I recollect that I believe I made the positive motion, and I think I overspoke to it, realizing at first that we were just finding E1 through E9. As the resolution is written, I find alignment between what we're asked to vote on in terms of the resolution and what the standard required the Board to actually find during the public testimony and our hearing on the case. With respect to partially met, that's terminology that I, as well as other Board members, have adopted in the past and believe that we have some latitude in our application of whether or not the standard is met. We've had discussion over the years about the aggregation of standards and things of that sort. So with respect to this particular case, the recording of Standard One is partially met again is not personally concerning to me, but could see how it could prompt some need for clarification by other Board members.
Mr. Vig?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I too was reading this and wondering, and maybe, maybe we've approved these, and I've never really given it a second thought before. But we do have a lot of debate back and forth on the different standards. We don't vote on standards individually and make a determination or finding a fact if one standard is met or not. We view the case in totality and vote on that. And I think at the end of the day, the resolution accurately depicts what the decision was. But on the individual standards, I don't know if it's, is this how we've always been doing it, I guess? Do you understand my question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I do. I'm not comfortable answering specific to this case.
Yeah, I know, you recused yourself. But maybe Ms. O'Brien could help us on that.
Ms. O'Brien, have you?
Did you hear my question?
Yeah. I wasn't present at the meeting, and I wasn't involved at all in writing the case or hearing the appeal. So I was busy learning, reading what the nine standards were. So I have to ask if you could repeat the question.
Sure. So my question was that we have debate on the standards, one through nine in this case, or one through seven in the normal, normal situation. And Board members make their motions and state their case, and some disagree and some agree. But we don't ever vote on an individual standard being met or not. And so when they're depicted this way as finding a fact that Standard Five is not met and Standard Seven is met, I, how do you get from the, from the debate we have to this statement that it's met or not met? Because when we call for a vote, we're voting on the total debate on all the standards and whether, whether the variance should be granted, or in this case, it was an appeal, should be granted.
So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vig, if somebody could tell me, after the discussion of the nine standards, was there, was the vote for, was the motion to grant the appeal or, and the, and the motion to grant the appeal carried? I, I don't know what the motion was.
The motion was to grant the appeal, and the motion carried.
And the motion carried. I'm trying to think this through. And so if, if there wasn't a vote on each, each of the nine standards, then if I'm understanding the question correctly, no, I need to ask, would the Board be more comfortable with just a synopsis of the Board's discussion of each standard without a statement that it was met, partially met, not met? And, and just have, you know, sort of like a recap of the Board's discussion for each and every standard, and then have the action just on the final decision, whether to grant the appeal or not? Is that what the Board was expecting or thought that would happen or expected to see in this resolution? I mean, there would have to be, there would have to, I would think there would have to be some information provided to show how the Board reached their final decision and voted on that, that motion. And I guess providing some recap of the discussion that the Board had on each standard would be the, provide the reasoning for the, how the Board reached their decision. And I suspect that the writer must have thought that stating it was not met or met basically provided the substantiation or the backup for the final vote.
If I may, could you respond? I, I think the, without stating whether Standard, whatever number, is partially met, not met or met, what follows accurately describes what happened. I mean, Standard, with number one, if the words, so Standard One is partially met were not there, it would still accurately reflect my recollection that we talked about the outside of the property not proposing to be changed. However, traffic patterns in on-street parking was not submitted in order to provide backup for the department. And if it was lined out that way, and then at the bottom, we vote and we grant the, we grant the appeal.
Mr. Hart, would you, there's going to be, there's more discussion than I thought. I'd be more comfortable if you were the Vice Chair, you are the Vice Chair, and I think you, I'd be more comfortable if you took over here for any further discussion. If you'll at least just, let's just go that route.
Sure, sounds good.
Thank you. I'll let you kind of go through who's in the queue.
If I may, Mr. Vice Chair now, I feel like we should perhaps loop back to Board Member Dole. Have we taken your question perhaps beyond what its intention was? I appreciate the conversation and think that we should have it with respect to Mr. Vig's question and, and further discussion. But just for clarity's sake, is, is your concern over the language, partially met, just with respect to Standard Number One? Or is it aligned with the broader discussion that we're now engaged in?
To, to the Vice Chair and the Board, I think maybe we can just vote on this resolution. However, I would like to have the discussion. And the one thing I am troubled about with regard to this specific resolution in front of us is that it's, it's, we're, it seems to me we're being asked to do something different than in most of the other cases we hear, like the two that we heard today, because it's an appeal of a decision by the municipality. When the municipality made the initial decision, they made findings. Those findings are fairly detailed, much more than this resolution. And I wonder if we shouldn't be making, having additional detail because of the nature of this being an appeal of a decision of the municipality than I saw reflected in this resolution. And while I did want to raise the question about partially met, that's probably a broader discussion because that has come up in, in other cases. And so I guess if someone wants to move to vote, we can vote on this or, or what?
Just to?
Oh, we have to send it back to the consent agenda?
So remanding is within our purview as the Board. Question for clarification, with respect to additional detail, what role do the minutes of the hearing play in providing that additional detail, if, if any?
Maybe that should be said into the mic.
Yeah.
The minutes, the original petitioner, Mr. Demas, I believe if he appeals the decision of the appeal approval, he will, they will use the minutes, actual minutes and a transcript of the minutes for the appeal.
My, I guess, question, I'm not, I don't recall whether we approved those minutes or not, because I believe at the last minute, I moved for changes. I don't.
You made a few of them with a financial report on something.
Yeah, I did.
And they're changed.
Okay, so we did move, approve the minutes. Okay. No, no, I, I read the minutes before, and anyway. Okay, I guess for the sake of moving this along, I guess I'll move to, move this, yeah, move to approve the Resolution 2014-008. As written, as written.
Okay, so it's been moved by, it's still unsupervised by Ellen McKay. Do you want to speak to the motion?
I do think that the comments on the findings of fact in the resolution reflect what was stated by the Board at the meeting and voted upon. My preference would be to have additional detail, but in terms of the resolution, it does have what, what we said at the meeting.
Is there any other discussion? I guess from my perspective, I mean, both the resolution and the minutes are going to be, I mean, for the record, so I don't see much of an issue with it. So if that's the case, can we vote? The motion to approve Resolution 2014-008 passes by a vote of five to two, or, sorry, five with two abstentions. And I'll give the chairmanship back.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Well, that got us through our, our consent agenda and our cases this evening. That brings us to, to reports. And while I don't have reports, I had a couple of comments, requests of the Board members this evening. And I know, I know it's difficult to do, especially when, when we don't have time to, if we have more of a public hearing, we have an opportunity to collect our questions and our thoughts a little bit better. But if we can consider our questions more in a timely fashion, so we ask the, either staff or applicant at the appropriate time, again, easier said than done sometimes, but if we could just keep that in mind. And then, Mr. Ron, if you'd like to, well, I, I agree with, with Ms. Dole. It would be nice, while I didn't think that it warranted my decision on voting on the second case, having a write-up on the Thibodeau decision would be helpful from a broad perspective. And I'd be interested in getting that. It didn't weigh, weigh in my decision one way or other. But, you know, if it has been overturned on appeal, I believe is what was alleged by the petitioner's representative. And Ms. Dole, if you wanted to state your request as well, or, I'd be interested in getting some information from the municipal attorney on that, that case as well.
Thank you. I would make a motion or second that, or be interested in obtaining additional clarification as to the current status of the law, the, with regard to the cases that are cited in that, in the write-up that we get, the 1964 case that came up today, as well as the 19, some of the other cases, even if it's just to say, yep, everything, we looked at it, everything is good, there's, we confirm that there's been no changes and it's up to date. It would, so I would request, if possible, that, that we get that at, for future meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Dole. Are there any other comments by any of the Board members? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm not in favor of continuing the discussion that was prompted by Ms. Dole's question. Again, Mr. Vig, I thank you for, you know, taking us down that path a little, a little way with respect to how do we get to a decision? I would like to find time, if the Board is interested, in continuing that discussion, perhaps at, at another Board meeting in, in the near future. With the Chair not recusing himself from that discussion.
And that was Mr. Vig's question on, on the, the second case, or the, the resolution that we just heard, and how the resolutions are written? Was that the question? I, yeah, just clarification on that.
I guess I see two parts, not only that, that element, but also the, the jump from discussion on the individual standards to a decision in the case. I realize we all individually approach that differently. But I'd, I'd be interested in some interpretation of, again, for a normal case, AMC 2115010B languages requires the seven standards to be substantially met for variance to be granted.
And I think the first part was, you didn't want to bring that up this evening, but I, oh, so I won't.
So that's the question for, for later. So that's the question for later pondering and discussion.
I'm always willing to state my opinion. Mr. Vig.
Well, I think it was our first case that involved the permits that were issued in error, and we had to deal with that. And I want to make, go on the record and state that I think that the staff does a really good job, and, you know, these kinds of things are really rare, and I commend the folks in the building safety department for all the work they do, and the fact that these kinds of errors are very rare is a testament to the work they do. And I don't want this case to reflect badly on the department.
Yeah, I get a little thin-skinned when it's, there's, you know, allegations that Muni, Muni, Muni did this, and then when we also hear, you know, you guys have a lot of better things to do than be, you know, X, Y, or Z, like we're out, maybe Ms. McKay's driving around in her neighborhood and looking for violations, but, yeah, it's, there's a little bit of tongue-biting that has to occur on some of these statements, but I'd echo what you say, Mr. Vig. It's real easy to, well, I'm impressed at the few cases that we hear on permits issued in error. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess as it pertains to the city and borough of Juneau versus Thibodeau and obtaining an analysis from legal, I guess I would prefer that we vote on that so that it's apparent that it's a unified request, not just two individual board members.
I would, I'd be willing to sign a resolution from the board, or what, Ms. O'Brien, how was, how are requests to staff and the attorney normally handled?
It would be a request for legal services, and it would be stated in the form of, the zoning board has requested information on the status of.
Okay.
It wouldn't be one person on the board has requested that, so.
Okay, so I believe that I'm comfortable unless I get voted out of office here, but requesting that the zoning board requests the status of the Thibodeau case and, you know, confirming, or clarifying how that applies to the standard number one, as it's been specifically referenced, unless someone else, Mr. Hart, does that, and Ms. Dole, does that convey the question adequately?
I guess I'm really just wanting to say that I'm in support of that as well, and it looks like everyone else on the board is.
Yes, there's nodding of heads from the all sides.
Mr. Chair, I would go even further and ask just to reexamine the, I guess, to confirm that the other cases that are cited and what they're cited for remain current with regard to the, I don't, I'll try and give more clarity.
Mr. Chair, could people make sure they speak into the mic so we get the correct request to the legal department?
Certainly. With regard to AMC 21.15.010B, the seven or eight standards, depending on whether you look at the 2000, the old code or the new code, we seem to get the same write-up with the same cases every single board meeting, with the same foot, there's footnotes to city and borough of Juneau versus Thibodeau, an Alaska 1979 case, to New Jersey Supreme Court, place v. Board of Adjustment of Saddle River, a 1964 case from New Jersey. And I would like to know if the statements for which those are cited, I would like confirmation or know if those remain valid in current law.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Dole, would it be appropriate to ask if there have been subsequent decisions that have superseded the interpretation of those two cases?
With regard to the what they are cited for, or if the discussion of those two cases remains accurate in light of subsequent decisions, maybe in other cases.
Okay, thank you.
If the rest of the board is in agreement in broadening our request.
Yes, I'm interested. The, I guess my follow-up is, I've had, it seems like the attorney's office is a little bit busy. I don't know if we could expect it at the next board meeting, or just how soon, but if we could just make the request to get it in the queue and let them know we're definitely interested, because it is something that's come up repeatedly, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I could, at this point, my experience is I couldn't guarantee for the next meeting, but certainly there would be a report that it's been requested and submitted by the next meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from any of the board members?
Just, I want to thank everyone for their patience with my questions and on some of these issues.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, comments, we're adjourned.